And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right on time. We'd like to start out, we have some recognitions today, and we'd like to start out with those. We have two special recognitions, one for Mary Evans and one for Kathy Benedict. They're both retiring at the end of the month.
You are?
Did you know that? Did I tell you that?
No, I thought I was supposed to take this entire month off, actually.
Mary Evans has been over thirty-one years with the county, and Kathy Benedict has been over twenty-three years with the county, and both of them have done an excellent job for the county. They've provided professionalism, service, assistance, and a strong sense of family and community, and is an accomplishment of which they should both be very proud of and all of us should be very proud of them. So we want to wish both of you all your best, good luck on your cruise, your worldly travels you're going on, and we'd like to give you these certificate of recognitions on behalf of that.
Really?
So Madam Treasurer?
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
And weren't you the nicest person in the courthouse or something like that?
We made it.
Congratulations to you both, we wish you all the best and hope you have a great time with your retirement and do lots of fun things.
I think we both want to thank our employees who made us what we are.
Absolutely, and the commissioners also. We've had some disagreements, but...
Really? Ever.
But we won't hear any of that in public.
We do have one more recognition.
Oh, at this time, I'd like to recognize a man that we all know and love, our sheriff.
Who are you doing?
Lance Benedict. Last Friday, as you may or may not know, Susquehanna County is in a jointer with Lackawanna for behavioral health, intellectual disability, and early intervention. And they give out a John J. Baldi Award. John J. Baldi worked for, in human services, for mental health, and he had a passion for his job and compassion for people. And for the past sixteen years, we have given out an award to someone that has a compassion for people, works with people with mental health, just an all-around personality that we all know and love, and this year it went to Lance Benedict. He's amongst people that are doctors, psychiatrists, Judge Brace in Lackawanna County, so he's among very influential people, and this is the first time that a law enforcement person has gotten the award, so we're very proud of him.
All the fun stuff's done.
Why is it so Baldi the award?
D-A-L-D-I.
Motion, recess, Commissioners, open the salary board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
What's the time?
Item four.
Sally Warren? Item nine oh four, item three. You didn't?
Unless this is changed, um, hang on, because... On motion... It was the second, third, fourth, and fifth motions down. We, the amounts that we voted on at the meeting were not these amounts that are here. Trying to do this before I came down, I'm running out of time. All right. The motion to create the full-time union position of Veterans Affairs Support Clerk, range thirteen, the minutes read eleven fifty-nine an hour. We voted on eleven forty-eight an hour. I'm assuming that was a mistake?
Yeah, it was the, the range is correct, but when we were looking at the column, we were using the wrong column.
Okay, so, but we voted on a different rate, so with that...
What did we vote on?
We voted on...
Eleven forty-eight, and it should be eleven fifty-nine. So that correction needs to be made. Well, apparently it is, but it was wrong what we voted. And then the next one down was, we voted ten eighty-five.
Right.
And it's actually ten ninety-six.
Right.
So I think with those corrections, I will make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item four.
Motion to approve item number four is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, signed by Commissioner Warren, approve item four on the agenda, change the yearly salary of the chief deputy coroner from seven thousand ninety-six seventy-eight to ten thousand two hundred, includes a two percent increase to the total salary from the allocation in 2015. It's just a shifting of hours allocated to the position. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion to approve item number five is listed on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco, approve item five on the agenda, change the yearly salary of the deputy coroner from seventy-two eighty to forty-four sixty-five effective January fourth, 2016. Questions or comments? Yes.
How is that an increase?
It's not an increase, it's an overall increase.
Right.
Between the two salaries. When you look at both, if you add both of them together, it's an overall increase of two percent.
Right.
It's not an increase, it's a decrease for the deputy, but overall, it's a two percent increase.
Right, they get the two percent increase going into next year with the salaries reversed, basically.
And what is the name of the deputy coroner?
Richard Hennessy, who is now chief deputy. Sean Hennessy is going to become chief deputy.
I mean, there's two people, Richard, Sean?
One's a chief, and one's a deputy.
Yep.
And they're related?
Yep, father and son.
All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item number six is listed on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, signed by Commissioner Warren, approve item six on the agenda, create the union full-time receptionist office assistant, range eleven, forty hours per week. Questions or comments?
And how much was that range, eleven?
Well, what with range thirteen, that we did for eleven fifty-nine was range thirteen, so this is a couple of steps below that.
Right, it'll depend on the bargaining unit, too. This is residual, right? So be residual, and be...
Is this, is this correct?
All right, so it'd be...
Ten thirty-five?
Ten thirty-five. No, yeah, ten thirty-five, no? Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
It's okay.
I make a motion to approve item number seven, is this on your agenda?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco, approve item seven on the agenda, create the non-union full-time position of Human Resources Administrative Clerk at salary of twenty-five thousand per year, forty hours per week. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item eight.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, signed by Commissioner Warren, approve item eight, eliminate position of temporary union switchboard operator effective January fourth. Questions or comments?
Are you going to have any switchboard operator?
It will fall back under part of the item six.
Which means, yes, she's doing that also?
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Item nine.
Motion to approve item number nine is listed on the agenda.
Is item number nine a union position yet? I don't think it is. Is it a switchboard operator?
Yeah, it's a non-union. Item nine, we got a motion?
I'll second it with that change.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, signed by Commissioner Warren, to approve item nine on the agenda. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item ten.
I make a motion to approve item number ten, is this on your agenda?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve item ten on the agenda, eliminate the position of Human Resources Clerk. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any public comment on the salary board?
Motion to close the salary board, return to the Commissioners' meeting.
Second.
Do we not want to suspend that until we get the minutes? This is the last meeting, we have to prove minutes.
No, we may have a quorum.
There'll be a quorum even after, going into next year.
Two of them can still be.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye. Got the time?
Okay, item number six. Item number six. You can be here all day for when you're going.
Sorry, I'll make a motion to approve item number six.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco, approve item six on the agenda, approve the minutes of the December ninth, 2015 meeting. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item number seven is the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, signed by Commissioner Warren, approve item seven on the agenda, ratify or approve the filing cash dispersment of electronic payments. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion to approve item number eight, is this on your agenda?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco, approve item eight on the agenda, to ratify or approve the filing seminar request of payments. Questions or comments? Yes.
Is basic training for jail people, is that corrections officers?
Yes.
Beginning basic training, this is what every one of them go through?
Yes.
So when you say cost four thousand, that's total for two people? Or per person? That's for the two people total?
It's for the two people.
And then what kind of basic training can you describe any of it?
Well, it deals a lot with, you know, how you're supposed to handle inmates at the jail, how you're supposed to protect yourself. I'm not sure how much it goes into self-extraction, but it goes over a lot of the basics of how you're supposed to interact with a prisoner.
And it goes for like a month, looks like?
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item nine.
Is this the one that's gonna have the float to do more than just one job? Or does that change? I thought she was on the float.
Yes, it is. Veterans, it should be Veterans Affairs slash, what did we say it was?
Planning Commission?
Purchasing.
Planning and purchasing.
Human resources, it was part of human resources, it's someplace where it's...
Right.
I think it's in the...
Right, that's four different locations. Do we get a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco, approve item nine on the agenda, transfer of terror county from the non-union human resources clerk positions to full-time union position, Veterans Affairs, Planning, Purchasing, and HR. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item ten is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, signed by Commissioner Warren, to approve, to ratify the termination of Alexander Novak, effective close of business December fourteenth, 2015. Questions or comments? Yes.
What is Alexander Novak's position there?
He was the assessor.
He's an assessor?
No.
How many assessors do we have?
Five. All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number eleven is listed on your agenda?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve item eleven on the agenda, to accept with regret the resignation of Jamie Coller from the jail. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item number twelve is listed on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren, to approve item twelve on the agenda, to approve transfer Patricia Lewis and Brackney from part-time corrections to officer to open full-time. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number thirteen is listed on your agenda?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve, to ratify the hiring of James Ditchey Nicholson to the open full-time position of Director of Elections Voter Register. Questions or comments? Yes.
Was that put out to the general public to find this person, like an ad in the paper? Or how do you find it? It was posted?
Yeah. It was on our website.
It was on your website, was it also in newspapers?
Uh, was that one, yeah, it was in newspapers.
And because you, you got rid of Mr. Lawrence, so then how did you get somebody so quick and advertise so quick? I mean, you knew...
Well, we advertised the day after he left and people applied.
And what was the day that he left?
I can't remember the exact date.
Was it December?
I don't know the exact date, I have to look it up.
Or the month?
Well, it was, I think it was, what, end of November, first of December, so it was a place in there. Yes, Bruce?
What newspaper was it advertised in?
I think I saw it in Mulligan's.
Yeah.
That's where I think I saw it.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number fourteen with the correction of transfer Janet Dupuy Montrose from the non-union position of Ad Non.
You got a second?
Well, I'm just trying to, so she's going from a non-union to a union?
Right.
Okay, second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco, approve item fourteen on the agenda, now it's transfer Janet Dupuy from Montrose, non-union position, switchboard operator, office assistant, to the full-time union position of historical records clerk and county receptionist. Questions or comments? Yes.
If she's already an employee here, does she still have to go through that six-month probationary period?
Yeah, because she goes into the union.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item fifteen.
Motion to approve item number fifteen is listed on the agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren, approve item fifteen on the agenda, purchase service agreement between Susquehanna County Services for Children and Youth, for Human Resources Services in Kingston, PA, for July first, 2014 through June thirty, 2015. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number sixteen is listed on the agenda?
A second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco, approve item sixteen on the agenda, reappointment of Ted Place to Susquehanna County Planning Commission, term January first, 2016 through December thirty-first, 2019. Questions or comments?
Is he replacing somebody?
He's a reappointment.
It's just a reappointment.
Right, he's there, he's getting reappointed. All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item number seventeen is listed on the agenda.
Do we need effective December thirty-first if we have the resignations already dated? Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, signed by Commissioner Warren, to approve item seventeen on the agenda, to accept with regret the resignations of Gerald Randcheski, Gary Marcho, and Roger Dulow from the Susquehanna County Industrial and Commercial Development Authority. Questions or comments? Yes.
You have three people here resigning basically at the same time. Is there some kind of a problem?
No, no, well, first of all, the Susquehanna County Industrial and Commercial Development Authority, I don't even think they're really doing anything anymore, do they?
I don't even know if they've had meetings.
Yeah, yeah, it's just something that's been sitting there for years and years. And I think the only reason why they haven't, the only reason why they haven't folded is because they still have some outstanding loans that they have out that went through PETA or something like that, that they're waiting to close out on. But, no, one is, actually the one, I think the person's term's up at the end of this month anyway, and the other two are both, you know, not in the area that much because of their vacationing and out of the state.
Is there anybody else on the board or the authority?
Yeah, there's other members on the authority.
Now, do they have a website? How do we find out who's on this board or anything? Is there a website?
I don't know if they have a website or not.
Is it on your site? Is it on the Susquehanna County? And who appoints them?
They get appointed through us?
Through you?
All in favor?
Aye.
Item eighteen.
Motion to approve item eighteen is listed on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, signed by Commissioner Warren, approve item eighteen on the agenda, to reappoint Elaine Andusco as the Housing Authority Director for a five-year term. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number nineteen is listed on your agenda?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve item nineteen on the agenda, to adopt the 2016 Susquehanna County budget, and want twenty-nine million, nine hundred, one thousand, thirty-six dollars and sixty-six cents. Questions or comments?
Based on Commissioner Jean Greco's reaction, is that an increase?
It's, if you take out the Act thirteen money, it's a small increase.
Okay.
Not much of an increase, it's a small increase, yes.
It's a lot of money.
Well, you got seven million of it is Act thirteen money that flows through the budget, so you're down to twenty-two. Item twenty.
Do we vote on that?
Oh, I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number twenty is listed on the agenda?
A second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco, approve item twenty on the agenda, sign the agreement between Lackawanna and Susquehanna County Office of Drug and Alcohol Programs for Northeastern Educational and Intermediate Unit nineteen, effective January first, 2016 through June thirty, 2016. There's no cost to this?
No.
With no cost. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
It's okay.
Make a motion to approve item number twenty-one is listed on your agenda?
Is that for sure gonna go in so that we don't transfer it to them, nothing happens and we lose it?
Yeah, we just have to make that...
We should make that condition of the thing that the gas line has to go in. So we just don't...
Right.
Would that change? I'll second it.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve transfer thirty thousand in Act thirteen to Greater Forest City Industries Incorporated for installation of the natural gas line into the Vision Two Thousand Industrial Park in Forest City. Total cost, two hundred and eighty thousand. Two hundred and fifty is what the Greater Forest City Industrial Incorporated is putting into it. Questions or comments? Yes.
You're approving thirty thousand from the Act thirteen, which is impact fund, because of gas drilling and impacts in our county, and you're promoting gas drilling by offering thirty thousand for a gas line? Does that sound like a little bit of a contradiction to you?
Because that's one of the things that you can use the money for.
Under what category?
Under public infrastructure. We're trying to create jobs, so by getting this gas line into the park, the last four people that tried to go in businesses dropped off because there's no gas service to the park. So by getting the gas service into the park, we then have a chance of creating jobs for communities.
Promoting gas with gas impact funds, well, it sounds contradictory to me.
No, make a title to your opinion. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Twenty-two.
Motion to approve item number twenty-two is listed on the agenda.
Go ahead and second it.
Second.
Okay, we need to make a, on that motion, the second, we need to make a...
A condition.
Condition of that approval, that the agreement between Pennsylvania and the Progress Authority and the, and Diaz is signed by both parties before we agree to it, or sign to it.
Yeah. You knew the motion with that change.
Okay, you okay with that?
Now, when you mention Diaz, are you talking about twenty-one or twenty-two?
I'm talking about twenty-two.
Okay.
Okay, so twenty-two is a motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren, to approve the letter of agreement between Pennsylvania American Water Company, Susquehanna County, for installation of the state route twenty-nine water main, with the condition that both Progress Authority and Diaz Manufacturing signs the agreement for the state. Questions or comments? Yes.
Now, how is, this is the water main to the jail?
Yes.
Talking about, and to the, and the industrial development of that area?
Right.
So how is Diaz involved?
Diaz is putting a facility in at the location down there and creating jobs, so in order to get state funding, there has to be a commitment as to how many jobs are being created.
So Diaz is involved in the industrial complex there?
He owns that complex down there.
He owns the complex?
He owns the section of land that he's working on, yes.
And how many acres is that?
I think it's around fifty or something like that, yeah.
So, and how far is that from the jail? Does it butt the jail property?
Yeah, it's butts the recycling center, so it's the jail, the recycling, and then this property. If you drive down, it's already been bulldozed and...
Take a look at it. And how far is it from the superfund site that we have, where Ben Diggs was?
I don't think I can tell you exactly.
Quarter of a mile, two thousand eight?
I don't know if the two properties butt up against each other or not.
They might butt up against each other.
It's possible.
It's possible, right?
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve twenty-three.
Motion to approve twenty-three.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, signed by Commissioner Warren, to approve item number twenty-three, to approve and sign the Fair Fund Provider Contract for a term beginning December first, 2015, through December, November thirty, 2016. Questions or comments?
What is the Fair Funds Provider Contract?
No, I mean, the Fair Funds, it doesn't matter what. The Fair Funds are funds that come through the county, they go to, out to different projects, they go to Susquehanna County Housing Authority, gets them, they do a lot for, like they use Fair Funds for projects like the mod, the duplex units they're doing in Forest City, the ones they're doing in New Melford, they've also done work for the sewage plant in Susquehanna, and also they have some blighted properties, they're using Fair Funds too, to take down the blighted properties in different towns also.
And where does the funds come from?
From Pennsylvania, state of Pennsylvania.
State?
All in favor?
Aye.
Item twenty-four.
Make a motion to approve item number twenty-four is listed on your agenda?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco, approve item twenty-four on the agenda, approve the purchase of the 2016 Explorer base, New Holland Co-Stars, I should say, it does say Co-Stars, yeah, priced at twenty-nine, two eighty-five for District Attorney's Office for Act thirteen money. Questions or comments?
And what is that? When you say it's Explorer base, New Holland?
It's a car.
It's a car, and it's being used for what?
In the District Attorney's Office.
District Attorney's Office?
Yeah.
For what purpose? To drive him around? I mean, what is that?
No, they do all kinds of things in the District Attorney's Office. They have deputies, they also go to the hearings in all the different locations, and so...
And this is being paid with Act thirteen money also?
Right.
Another impact from gas drilling?
Okay, listen, we can tell you whether you like what it is and don't like what it is. I didn't make the rules, PUC did. PUC says we can use it for this, we use it for this.
So what category now for the car, for the Diaz?
Judicial.
Judicial. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
We do need to go back, we have to fix one thing in the minutes.
We listed the minutes.
Which minutes?
The last, the Commissioners' meeting? The second to the last motion of Commissioner Warren approved a change of order for jobs and controls, second by Commissioner Hall, and an abstention by Commissioner Jean Greco.
I abstained, correct.
So those changes, you want to reapprove the minutes?
And bailing is still spelled.
A lot.
Do you want to approve the minutes?
Yeah.
Those changes?
Yeah.
Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's take care of it. Public comment?
Motion to adjourn.
Right.
Okay, last meeting, you had a whole thing about noise testing from a citizen, a mimic, who's concerned by, because he's surrounded by three compressor stations and the noise level. Since that's two weeks ago, and he asked for help, what had you come up with to help him? Since you're spending all that Act thirteen money, can we get like a noise meter?
No.
Certified noise meter?
No.
No, of course not, right? Because that's an impact. Why cover an impact?
Here's what we've done. As soon as I left here, as I told Bruce, we're down, talk to the Planning Commission. Jason was here, Jason Leg was here, he and I talked about it. DEP is the enforcement mechanism for this noise. State, under DEP regulations, has fifty-five decibels. We have fifty. The state preempts us. We could not enforce the fifty decibels, and we have no enforcement mechanism in the ordinance. We have directed him to go to DEP because they have the enforcement mechanisms in place, as well as the personnel. Susquehanna County has no code enforcement officer to enforce any of the ordinance we have, especially the Planning Commission. So we are going to contemplate rewriting that ordinance to make it compliant with the state, because there's no way we could enforce the fifty decibels when the state has preemption. It can't be stricter than they are. So it's gonna be DEP will enforce the decimal levels.
But DEP has never enforced any decimal level that I know we've inquired on, just DEP.
Somebody's gonna have to get after them, because that's what they do.
So then, why don't you just change your law, your regulation, to match the state of fifty-five?
We are gonna contemplate, I just said that.
Right, so if you do make it fifty-five, then can you enforce it?
We're not gonna get into the enforcement of it, because we don't have anything in place to do it. DEP preempts us, they are the enforcement agency for those regulations.
So now, if you don't want to enforce it, and you want to leave it?
It's not a question whether we want to or not, it's a question whether we have the authority to.
So then, if you don't have, you claim you don't have the authority, can you at least have the mechanism, which would be the noise meter, to test when citizens complain, that you can send somebody either from zoning or from assessment, and let them test? And if there is a problem, they can then notify and verify to the DEP that these people are being subject...
That's DEP's job to do it.
So then, who is going to notify the DEP when they have a problem in our county?
Hey, if somebody comes to us and tells us about it, I'm sure we'll be happy to help them notify DEP. The actual original complaint has to come from the person affected by it.
Okay, so the person...
If we can help them, let me finish. If we can help them as a county to facilitate, to point them in the right direction, we'll be more than happy to do that, I'm sure.
So then, what did you do for Mr. Winshue? How did you?
He's gonna go to DEP.
You just told him to go to DEP on his own.
Well, what do you want me to do, where? You want me to take him by the hand, drive him to DEP?
No, you, you, since you haven't...
Look, I'm asking, I'm answering your question. I know you don't like the answer, that's too bad.
Why don't you contact the DEP and tell them you have citizens who are complaining about the noise?
Well, Planning Commission has done that. You asked me what we're doing, I told you what we're doing. I can't help you don't like the answer.
When did the Planning Commission complain to the DEP?
I don't know.
Was it recently?
Look, I've answered your question, I'm not gonna debate it with you.
All right, I'll look.
Any other public comment?
Um, yeah, there are four people on the salary board, and two people would not, would be a quorum.
I, I don't understand your...
There's four of us on the salary board?
For the minutes.
Four of us on the salary board, now wait a minute.
We're on the salary board, two would not be a quorum.
One, two, three.
You're not gonna be here either, so you can't, you can't vote either.
But who did we affect?
We just have to, we just have to...
Tony, so Tony can be here, there's, there would, see, for those, there's five. There's a four of us, plus him is five, so take you and I out of the mix is three.
He can't do the rest of them, because he's only a part of the salary board when it affects...
That affects him.
Correct. So then you're down to two. Two is not a quorum, three would be a quorum.
Please, we need, we need one more.
I, and...
For the salary board.
Just because I understand that you cut out one of my years of service.
Yeah, I cut out twenty-three to twenty-four, I thought it says twenty-four though. We gave you the order for twenty-four.
Because I said I'm here twenty-four years.
Is that twenty-three and...
And, and, um...
Eleven months?
Three weeks.
Twenty-nine days and twenty-three hours?
Whoa.
You can't serve six terms and come up with twenty-three years and eleven months. I'm sorry. That's not how it goes. I can add and I can multiply.
Twenty-nine days and twenty-three hours?
And fifteen minutes and forty-three seconds.
Well, the salary board, I mean, you...
Well, you'd be around, huh?
That's correct.
Yeah, but he, what?
You're right.
At the next meeting, he will not have the authority to vote on the minutes.
Yeah, January fourth, Stoud will be here.
I guess we have to try and read him back and do it now?
That's normally how it's done.
Yeah, that's, that's...
I've been, even though I've only been here twenty-three years and eleven months...
You take the ten?
I, yeah, I learned one or two things about how this works.
I'll teach you to give your number.
Salary Board. Motion number three, motion by Treasurer Banick to approve the minutes for the December ninth, 2015 salary board, with corrections to the last meeting to add and correct, um, dollars per hour. Second by Commissioner Jean Greco. Motion number four, motion by Commissioner Jean Greco to change the yearly salary for the Chief Deputy Coroner from seven thousand, ninety-six dollars and seventy-eight cents to ten thousand, two hundred dollars, effective January fourth, 2016. This amount includes a two percent increase in the total salary, money allocation from 2015 salary, and a shifting in the amount of hours allocated to this position. Second by Commissioner Warren. Motion number five, motion by Commissioner Warren to change the yearly salary for the Deputy Coroner from seven thousand, two hundred, eighty dollars, eighty dollars, to four thousand, four hundred, sixty-five dollars and thirty-one cents, effective January fourth, 2016. That includes a two percent increase in the total salary, money allocation from the 2015 salary, and a shifting in the amount of hours allocated to this position. Second by Commissioner Jean Greco. Motion number six, motion by Commissioner Jean Greco to create the union full-time position of receptionist slash office assistant, range eleven, at ten dollars and thirty-five cents per hour, forty hours per week, six months probationary period, with benefits according to the government man due requirements, effective January fourth, 2016, per the recommendation of R.S. Stoud, Acting Chief Clerk. Second by Commissioner Warren. Motion number seven, motion by Commissioner Warren to create the non-union full-time position of Human Resources Administrative Clerk, salary of twenty-five thousand dollars per year, forty hours per week, six months probationary period, with benefits according to the government man due requirement, effective December twenty-third, 2015, per the recommendation of R.S. Stoud, Acting Chief Clerk. Second by Commissioner Jean Greco. Number eight, motion by Commissioner Jean Greco to eliminate the position of temporary union switchboard operator slash office assistant temp, effective January fourth, 2016, per the recommendation of R.S. Stoud, Acting Chief Clerk. Second by Commissioner Warren. Number nine, motion by Commissioner Jean Greco to eliminate position of full-time, non-union switchboard operator slash office assistant, effective January fourth, 2016, per the recommendation of R.S. Stoud, Acting Chief Clerk. Second by Commissioner Warren. Motion number ten, motion by Commissioner Warren to eliminate position of Human Resources Clerk, effective January fourth, 2016, per the recommendation of R.S. Stoud, Acting Chief Clerk. Second by Commissioner Jean Greco. Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco to close the salary board, meaning a return to Commissioner's meeting. Second by Commissioner Warren.
You want to hand that?
I am, thank you very much. If we could have it printed up so I could sign that?
Well, we're gonna make a motion to approve.
Is that a motion, Kathy?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as, as corrected.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Treasurer Banick, second by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve the salary board minutes that were just read back. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So, Carrie.
Now you got a motion to adjourn.
And I'd like to ask another question. How's the budget doing for the state? Anything come through it?
Not yet.
Any prospects?
Just many promises.
And then, how's the TIC task force doing? Any meetings yet or?
Not yet. Gotta get it back together and get it going. Been busy with a lot of other things.
So it's like on the sidelines right now?
Yeah.
Did you get my note about my doctor? Who says there's a contagious epidemic in your county?
All right, thank you. Bruce, you have a question?
Well, a comment. The word on the screen is that the Pennsylvania House is going to cave, and it's gonna be a personal income tax raise and a raise in the sales tax. Commissioner, does have any comment on how that may affect the county?
That the personal income tax is gonna increase and the sales tax is gonna increase?
Mm-hmm.
Well, you know, listen, it's, you know, the basis of having some kind of basis in our understanding of economics in Harrisburg has gone out the window. You know, you can keep taxing everybody to death, but the more you keep raising taxes, eventually you're gonna receive less revenue than you receive today. For instance, the gas tax is a big one, being the highest in the country now. If you go to the, the gas stations or at the state lines, they used to be busy from Thursday night till Sunday night, from people from New York buying gas.
Oh, cigarette taxes too.
And cigarettes too.
They're gonna go up.
So now, if you go to these places, because of our gas tax, these places, you can get in and get gas anytime you want, because everybody's buying gas in New York now, because it's cheaper. So not only did they lose the increase they were thinking they were getting, they also lost part of the base that they had. So, you know, it's basic economics. You keep taxing people to the point where they stop buying goods, they'll go someplace else. And I guess if you're in the middle of the state, at State College, you're probably kind of forced into buying your gas and goods locally. But for all the bordering towns with other states,